Six thirty, so we all open the meeting. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Starbuck on December thirteenth. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Joan, would you call the hall, please?
Mayor Swanson.
Here.
Councilor Gorder.
Here.
Councilor Tafe.
Here.
Councilor Bockel.
Yes.
Councilor Hanson.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions about the agenda? I would just like to make a couple announcements under the mayor section there regarding the environmental drop site and the comprehensive plan. Well, scratch that comprehensive plan, just the environmental drop site. If I could have a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to accept the agenda as amended, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Tonight, we have a public hearing on truth and taxation, and we will open that up at six thirty-three. If there's anyone that would like to address the council, you're welcome. If there's no one that would like to address the council, we will close the truth and taxation meeting at six thirty-four and proceed with the next item on the agenda, which is Widdseth, represented by Larry Van Hout. And, hi Larry.
Okay, I just want to give you a quick, just a little short update. The 2020 road project, we did have a walkthrough with MINDOT here, and it was just a couple days after your last council meeting. Randy and myself went around, spent about an hour and a half walking the project. Again, went, talked, it was Brian Bosman was there, Dan Kuhn, and then Chad, the inspector from MINDOT, were all there. One of the big items was the pavers in the sidewalk, you know, some of those like in front of the cafe, Nutcracker, and along the bank and that, or down a fair amount from the sidewalk. It appears, what it looks like is the sand's washing away, you know, so it just keeps washing, and the block, the pavers keep falling away. So they did get hold of Todd Carroll to come out and take a look at that. You know, he's the guy that you worked with on the design, you know, the many design. He come out there, and what he's suggesting to be done is they got a polymeric sand that's supposed to, I guess you put it in place and it's supposed to bind and not wash out, like the stuff we got, we got in here. So the plan is that MINDOT's gonna reset the pavers with just sand before winter here. I think, you know, they were gonna maybe start today or tomorrow, one of the two, before the weather turns. At least get the bad ones up. They'll do that now, but then in the spring, come back, you know, and if, they're not sure if they have the contractor do it, or they'll have somebody else do it, but, you know, put the sand in, give a better base that won't wash away. So that's what they're proposing there.
And that's like no cost to the city, right?
That's my understanding, Steve. They haven't talked class with me, and I'm assuming it would be, they wouldn't charge us for that. You had a question?
Yeah, we, we met with Dan Kuhn and Todd Carroll and, you know, it was Randy, in my opinion, that we ought to take the pavers up on that block and put in colored cement.
Yep, we talked about that.
And what's your opinion on that?
Yeah, well, the only thing is, is getting it, how do you attach it to the concrete so it doesn't move on us? That was the only concern, you know, if you usually have a differential like that, you'd kinda like to have some rebar or something tied together. Yeah, to pin it or something, you know, but there's only like this much room to try to get in there. That's the only concern I got. But we did talk about that, Gary, I was just paving something in there, colored concrete, but this is what they've come back with.
But, I mean, with the pavers, you got this, you know, you got gap between each paver, you know?
But again, they got this, the sand is what he's proposing. Like, again, it's supposed to bind, I guess you get something in there that stays, it might be okay. So, I got, you know, and I brought the thing too about with MINDOT, about colored concrete paving in there, but, you know, the question is, how do we pin it or something so that doesn't move also, you know, to keep that from settling away on us. And they didn't have a, you know, they couldn't think of a good way to get that to stay. So, anyway, that's what they're proposing. I guess if, you know, we want to do something different, I guess we can still continue to talk with them.
So they wouldn't finish that till next spring?
Correct, yeah.
And if we still have a problem after that?
We'd go back and talk to them again. You know, so, they're, they're talking about closeout wouldn't be till next summer, so, you know, so they got a little time there to see how it's working. Anyway, that's what they're proposing right now, is what Brian told me this morning. Okay, so that's what they're talking about with the pavers, the seed and sod areas, again, we had a fair amount that didn't grow. They're gonna come back and redo it, you know, in the spring. They'll have the same contractor come back and they'll, you know, I don't know if they'll re, you know, do sod everywhere, if they'll, does it intercede or what they're gonna do, but they're gonna not give up on it, they're gonna continue with, you know, doing something with the seeding. You know, some areas are pretty tough. Some areas grew fine, but others, not. So we talked to them about that. Talked to them about the detour over on Sixth Street, you know, they had that one block that kinda got used, that really wasn't supposed to, it looks like it's rutted a little bit. MINDOT come back, that they did give the city six, I think it was like fifty thousand or sixty thousand for a couple streets. Plus, they did pave Overlay John for us, which was supposed to be the detour. So they basically come back, they're not willing to do anything for us. I know the street was in not the greatest shape before, but you can see where it's a little rutted. But, you know, I just told MINDOT I didn't agree with that, but that's what they're saying is right now, they're saying, no, they're not gonna help do anything with Sixth. And then the last one we talked about was the Casey sidewalk, they've got nothing out of them to be able to do that. You know, it was kinda got cracked there by the entrance, and they've talked to them, they just, they won't do anything, so. So those are, I think, the big items we talked about. We had the property owner here, was the last, last meeting, asked about the ditch by the bridge, if he could clean that out and rip wrap it. Talked to MINDOT about it, and they basically said, apply for a permit. You know, if he wants to do something, apply for a permit, and, you know, talk to the DNR, because it's in a wetland.
I think they told me on a previous walkthrough that, go ahead and do it.
Well, they said you should have a permit for it. You don't work in MINDOT right away without a permit. I've learned that over the years, so I'd be a little cautious about it digging and then ask for forgiveness on that one, but it's pretty obvious where you're at, you can't hide it. So, anyway, they suggested a permit. So, so that was what the, where we're at with the 2020 project. Again, they said closeout next summer, so then again, I'd say we definitely want to have that hearing, our assessment hearing next fall. The station for Spain, electrical inspector was there, got those stickered, so just a couple punch list items, then we'll work to close that one out. Then, I guess, the comp plan, again, a few clarifications when you need, and then we can, you know, continue with that, so. So that's my update. Dick didn't have anything on the trail. You know, I suppose till spring, if there's any seeding that has to be done. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What's the view on the sign right in the middle of the sidewalk in the camper?
I can, I can address that. I talked to Brian Bosman, and, and he's gonna have it moved. And I also talked to Dan Kuhn about the same thing on the south side of twenty-eight. You know, there's some signs right in the middle of the sidewalk, and, you know, so we're trying to get that changed, you know, it's ridiculous, so.
I thought the camp, I thought the one you said maybe already got moved, was it there today?
I guess I did.
The sign, the sign is out of there.
Okay, they said they moved it, or got it out of there, I don't know if it's been reset yet. I think it may be, the one has already been done and stuff. Yeah, he mentioned that to me. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. When was that? Could you give me that pen, please? We, we met with Nathan on Thursday, right?
Friday.
Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was Friday. Next item on the agenda, I just wanted to announce that the Pope Douglas Solid Waste Management Board has unanimously approved to have an environmental drop site in Starbuck, and we're looking at a location behind West Central Irrigation, close, in the corner by the transfer station. And they, we met with them last Friday, and we're working on an agreement and, and terms, and they should be starting in April or May to put up fencing, connect electricity, cameras, lights, and so forth. And then they'll be moving a building in shortly after that, so, perhaps by June, so. And, so there'll be more information coming on that, but we're very happy that, that we got that finally resolved, and, and it will be in Starbuck, so. Next item on the agenda is the police, Chief Mitch Johnson.
Okay, basically for November, a hundred, we had a hundred and sixty-one calls for service, I think it was right around that, the month previous, so it's about the same, it's kind of our slower time of the year, so. Other than that, we've been just busy. We had, I think there was Glacial Hills Elementary had a career in safety day, we had an officer over there for that, for that day. And we've been talking with Glacial Hills about their lockdown procedures, and we're gonna be doing a, a training with them this coming summer so that they're up to date on all their lockdown procedures, so. But other than that, if there's any questions just regarding calls for service, there isn't much there to pick from, so. No questions there. We did have a part-time Shane Carlberg who resigned, so we would need an approval to approve that resignation, I guess.
I'll make the motion to approve the resignation of Shane Carlberg.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to accept the part-time officer Shane Carlberg resignation, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Is there any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And the only other one I have is Officer Kyle Brundage has reapplied and would like to come back to work with Starbuck PD. He took some time off, he was full-time law enforcement in Morris, and decided to go and open up his own business, so, but he still wants to continue working part-time, so once he got that squared away, he had to resign because he was taking some money out of his retirement, but that's his choice. So anyways, it would be no cost to the city to put him back on, it's just basically, you know, put him back on, he's got the uniform and everything we need, so it's just formality of approving that, I guess.
Mitch, I did have a question about part-time law enforcement. Are they required to work a certain amount in a month or anything? There's no requirement, they're just basically a casual that come and fill in?
Yeah, I have a part-time schedule, it's not, it's not mandatory that they work, because we have, we have part-time shifts that I have on, on the weekends, day shifts, and then the rest of it's just either trying to fill in for backfill if we're someone sick or at training, but there is no mandatory.
They don't have any requirement?
Nope, and I, if I did, I don't even, we'd have struggled to get it filled, because we're struggling just to keep people, so.
Sure.
Yep, yep.
I'll make the motion to rehire part-time Officer Kyle Brundage.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to accept the rehire of part-time Officer Kyle Brundage, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Is there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna bring up the contract with the police officers, and I just advised the council that we have got the contract back, and so if we'd like to make a motion that we approve it as we discussed in our, in our closed meeting.
I'll make that motion that we approve the police officers' contract as discussed in our closed meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the police officer contract as discussed in the closed council meeting, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any questions or discussion? Speak up, I can't hear you. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Guess that's it.
Okay, I'll be taken off, I had my injection today, it's on my back.
Doing okay so far?
Yeah, it's just really tender, so. See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're expecting Randy Peterson to come and discuss some items for water and sewer, but he's on his way back from a trip and should be here shortly, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the fire department and Fire Chief Doug Neis.
Hello, I guess I'm just looking to go for our department as far as payroll. Yearly, we go, we have a six thousand dollar budget as far as payroll. I've never seen it raised at all. I was just gonna see if we could bring that to eight thousand for the, for the guys, because it's, we are paid on calls, so we do get a little bit for every call. I think this year was five dollars and fifteen cents, or five dollars and thirteen cents or something. So I was gonna see if we could bring that up, two thousand dollars, and then for the assistants, they get three hundred dollars for doing the assistant job, and I was gonna see if we could get that to six hundred. Just see what you guys thought, and...
Say it's currently six thousand, and...
Yeah, six thousand currently is what we split up, and that gets, that'll go out to all the townships too, so. Kind of budgeted for six, and then, yes. Nope, chief is separate, we'll just, we can leave that. I'd like to go to ten thousand in full-time, like I said the other day, but, yeah, I know, we don't do anything, so it's...
We were talking today that we're waiting for some information from Tom Spahala to, before we can proceed with negotiating contracts with the townships and so forth. Do you know about where these can, have that available, or?
For what now? Billable hours?
Yeah, you know, call...
The city had quite a bit this year.
Number of calls and the, and the hours.
We had seventy-three calls this year. I think the city had the bigger majority of them, from what Tom was telling me, but there was, you know, like the medicals and weather watching, those all get kicked out, so with that, I'm not a hundred percent sure, certain on his numbers of it, but yeah.
Yeah, if we could get them sometime before the end of the year, or whatever, so...
He has them, I think, pretty much.
Probably wanna send out letters to the townships in January.
And if they want me to come meet with them, I can meet with them individually too this year, and whenever they want, and we should probably put that in our letter, I think it'd be, would be big.
So Doug, that, that additional three hundred apiece for the assistant chiefs, that's over and above the two thousand more you're asking for?
Yes, yep, so it'd go twenty-nine hundred.
We do, we do have a meeting coming up on, end of the year meeting, too, we could make a decision at that time.
Yeah, and I probably just need to add an extra thousand dollars, I think. So, pretty close.
I just figured I'd ask, because I haven't seen it go up, and I don't know if you did when you were there, so it's probably been the same ever since. I did the assistant thing, and that's, you know, it's three hundred bucks, but you're taking a lot of responsibility and a lot of liability on you personally, so give them a little boost, I guess, is kinda, so.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have anything else.
So, I don't know, if the council wants to make a decision now, or to bring it up at our December closeout meeting, year-end meeting?
You know, there's no question, Doug, that, that I think the council feels that every one of these volunteer firemen earns their keep, and they don't really ask for much. So I, I guess what I'd like to see us do as a council is wait until our, our latter December meeting, just to make sure that we can, we're not pinched.
I think this year will be good, so.
And thank you guys for everything.
Goodbye. Does anyone else have anything, or? Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of the year-end meeting, I'll, I'll ask Joan to bring that up.
So we just need to schedule our year-end meeting so we can approve any bills that come in up to that point, and we can discuss the fire department's request. I tentatively put down December twenty-eighth, like at noon, it should be a fairly quick meeting. I don't know how that looks for everybody. Okay, I'll send out a invite. Does that look good for everybody else? Okay.
It's fine with me, so.
I'll be good. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission. We had a, one of our planning and zoning commissioners, terms are up at the end of the year, and Tom Astmas has agreed to a new three-year term, and the Planning and Zoning Commission was very much in favor of that, and so I'd just like to request a motion to approve the appointment of Tom Astmas to a new three-year term, beginning January first.
Make a motion to appoint Tom Astmas to a new three-year term on the Planning and Zoning Committee beginning January first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hanson to approve the appointment of Tom Astmas to a new three-year term, beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, on the Planning and Zoning Committee, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Is there any just further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is old business regarding Mike Dinsmore's request to forgive late charges on utility bills. I think we had made a decision before to send them to taxes, and I think Joan has looked into the possibility of using our funds, and that is not really clear whether we could do that. Plus, we have some infrastructure issues that Randy Peterson will be discussing that very clearly is acceptable to use our funds for, so. I guess I would make the motion that, that we leave things as is, and in accordance with the ordinance, and the taxes have already been, or the late utility bills have already been sent to, to taxes. Most of them were paid shortly after the last council meeting, but there may be any left that, that you know, Joan, or?
There is a couple left.
Couple left, that will still go to taxes, so. I would like a motion to approve that, and...
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Swanson to approve sending the late utility bills to, to taxes at seven percent, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item...
Can I ask a quick question on that? Or is this, we're not going to do this, right?
Correct, yes, that, that we're not forgiving any late charges, or anything, you know? Following the ordinance?
Yep, okay.
So, all right, next item on the agenda is, and I, I should mention, too, that I'm on the Minnesota Mayor's Association listserv. There's been a lot of discussion lately about utility bills and late utility bills, and I think the over, well, overwhelming majority of the opinion is that the property owner is responsible, and that if they're not paid, it does go to taxes, and, you know, and so. Next item on the agenda is, is to discuss the parameters for a paving project that Harvey Peterson brought before the council at our last council meeting. We've had some discussions with him and have agreed to put out a, a letter to the property owners in that area to see if there's any interest in pursuing a project to pave the streets or put in curb or gutter or what... Put in curb or gutter or whatever, uh, and we have to do that before we can put out a f- a formal proposal or, uh. You know. What am I trying to?
Specific.
A specific, uh.
Specific specs.
Yeah. So, this is just a general letter going out to, out to them, just asking if there's any interest in pursuing it, so. And we'll, we'll go from there. So I don't think we need any council action on that at this time, so. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve the, the final tax levy for twenty twenty-two and, uh. We're, uh. Think the, uh, the, uh, city tax or le- city levy certification taxes payable in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we are proposing a five percent increase, um, that's lower than like Wilmer or Glenwood, uh, or whatever, so. And it's lower than, uh, what the inflation is right now, so, um. I will, uh, accept a motion to approve a final tax levy for twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we, uh, accept resolution that, um, twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two final tax levy for twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, do we need a separate, uh, approval for the certification or?
Probably just.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll. First of all, we have, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two final tax levy for twenty twenty-two, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, is there any further discussion on that? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, I would like a, a separate approval of the, uh, Hope County City Levy Certification, uh, for taxes payable in twenty twenty-two.
I'll also make that motion that we approve the final tax levy for twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the, uh, Hope County City Levy Certification, uh, uh, report, uh. Seconded by Councilman Tafe, is there any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one thirty-four to adopt the twenty twenty-two budgets. That's a resolution adopting the final general fund twenty twenty-two budget.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four, resolution approving the. Or adopting the final general fund twenty twenty-two budget, seconded by Councilman, Councilwoman Hanson, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five to accept the redistribution of American Rescue Plan COVID funds. We did, uh, receive a resi- or, uh, distribution before, but they, uh, have. Refigured it and we got, what, two thousand more?
Two thousand two hundred dollars more.
Yeah, so. So I'd like a motion to approve that, uh, resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five, uh, accepting redistribution of, uh. American Rescue Plan funds, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson, is there any further discussion?
Here, can I just ask a simple question, where are those funds going to?
I'm sorry?
The COVID money. Where's the, where are the funds going to, where are they, where are they being redistributed to?
We, we haven't made that decision yet.
So you, you're getting a fund of money and you get to decide, you have to decide where it's going in, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just asking, I.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've received the first half of the distribution, we get the second half when?
Next year.
Next year, so.
We have to tell twenty twenty-four to spend it.
So.
And there's guidelines on whether you can spend, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and they keep, and they keep changing and refining the guidelines, so. So.
I was just curious, I thought maybe something had been decided on, that's why I asked.
No, no. Okay, uh, uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve the liquor licenses for the Water's Edge, Blair's Pub and Grub, VFW, Minnewaska Liquor. And Casey's three-point-two license and, uh, I would assume Councilwoman Balko will abstain from this. So, I'd like a motion to approve those liquor licenses.
I'll make the motion that we approve the liquor licenses for the Water's Edge, Blair's Pub and Grub, uh, the VFW, Minnewaska Liquor and Casey's three-point-two license.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Gorder to approve the liquor licenses for Water's Edge, Blair's Pub and Grub, VFW. Minnewaska Liquor and Casey's three-two license, seconded by Councilman Tafe, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve the liability coverage waiver form, uh, for the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, Insurance Trust. Uh, this is something that, that we do annually and, uh, it, uh, limits the city's liability for a single occurrence to, to, uh, two million dollars, so. Like I say, it's an annual, uh, annual thing that we do and.
I'll make the motion to approve the liability coverage waiver form.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the liability coverage waiver form for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, uh, seconded by, uh, Councilman Gorder. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And next item on the agenda is to discuss changes to the twenty twenty-two fee schedule. I don't know if you wanna say anything about that, Joan, or?
Um, I, the changes that were proposed are highlighted and it kinda shows, it shows what they were and what we're proposing that they're changed to. So, um, the electric hookup in the campground, basically we just, um. Rounded up the numbers to kind of a more even amount, easier to deal with. Um, the seasonal rates, we already approved going up, um, a hundred dollars a year for Hobo Park. And there's a proposal in there to raise the marina slip rate from four hundred to four twenty-five. And the monthly rate from two oh-three to two-ten. And then the city boat slip, um, charge for the marina, um, to raise it from four thirty to four fifty. Uh, in the channel and from four fifty to four seventy on the west end.
Are there any questions about those proposed changes? Uh, we also added, uh, for the landfill fees, uh, commercial use for any commercial, uh. Entity that wants to dump trees or branches or. I'm not sure if we allow stumps, but. But, uh, at, uh, four fifty a cubic yard and, uh. Uh, we did that because the new housing project, uh, down by the beach had a lot of trees and they had to dis- to dispose of them and, uh. Uh, but we didn't really have anything in the fee schedule to charge for that, so. So we set this fee and, uh, he's paid it and, uh, and some other commercial entities have, uh, also paid it, so. So, uh.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed, uh, fee schedule for twenty twenty-two as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to accept the, uh, uh, changes to the twenty twenty-two fee schedule as presented, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three fee schedule, so, and I guess, uh. We can consider that, uh, passed along with the previous motion. Uh, next item is a bids for abatement of property on two oh-sixty-seventh street, Ferguson Brothers and Lundblads. The, uh. The judge has, uh, issued an order, uh, I guess dated. Let's see.
Basically ten days from the sixteenth of November.
Sixteenth of November, yeah, okay. Yeah, so the, the order was issued in November sixteenth and, uh, uh, Mister, uh. Mister Burquist and Mister Manley had ten days to contest it and, uh, which hasn't been done, so the cities can proceed with the. The demolition of the property, so. I think we have one bid from Ferguson Brothers for fifteen, or nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And another bid from Lundbrad- Lundblad Brothers Excavating for fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-four sixty. So it's a substantial difference, the only question that I had is that Ferguson. Uh, mentions that they would, uh, fill the basement, uh, put in black dirt and seat it, uh, Lundblads doesn't say anything about that, but. We could certainly call them and see if that would be included in the bid, so. So I guess I'd make a motion that, uh, we, uh, award the contract to Lundbrad Brothers, uh. You know, with the provision that they can, uh, put black dirt and, and seat it, uh, uh, also.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I have a question on that, uh. I mean, what if they come back with a number that's higher than Ferguson's after that, I, I don't foresee that happening, but it could. Cause we, we don't, we don't know.
I think, I think we just tell them that we'd like to award the contract to them if they can provide, you know, put black dirt and, and seat it.
Okay.
If they, if they can't do it, dog will revisit it. Probably at our December meeting, so, twenty-eighth meeting, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. We had seconded by.
I did.
Okay. So I have a motion for Mayor Swanson to accept the Lundblads' bid for, uh, demolition of the property at two oh-sixty-seventh street, uh. With the provision that they, uh, uh, put in black dirt and seat it, uh, following, filling in the property. Uh, seconded by Councilman Tafe, is there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-nineteen through January thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-two, just as a precaution to.
I'll make that motion that we extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-nineteen through January thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to ex- extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-nineteen through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, seconded by Councilman Tafe, uh, any discussion or? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. See, uh, Randy Peterson is here now, so we'll move back to the, uh, water and sewer, uh, section of the agenda and.
Sorry I was late, um, I was out of town. But, yeah, we had a busy week last week, to say the least. Started out, we had a, a hole in the water tower, so, um, Great Plains Structure, they're kinda the company that builds them. I got ahold of them and they actually made a special trip out the following day, um, s- so that they could take a look at it, I sent them some pictures so they could assess it. To see what they needed, um, they asked if I could drop the water level below the leak so it'd be dry, so their sealer could dry. And seal better to, better the chances of the patch holding. So that's why the north end of town experienced some low water pressure for, well, close to a couple days or a day and a half anyway. They, they came out, we, uh, got Rick Ferras or Jeff Ferras brought a boom truck out so they could get up to the leak, it was about thirty feet off the ground. Um, he took a look at it and he drilled it out and he said the metal on the tank looked really good, which is a relief, he wasn't sure, you know, what, what you're gonna find. But he said that those old tanks, they're built a lot heavier than the new ones are because, his words were, when in doubt, build them stout back then, so. He said there's, there's good life left in the tank, it just needs a little, a little help and a little fixing up for, for the future.
That is, that is our second leak in that tank, though, right?
Yep, the first one, it was like a seam and that's kinda common, there's kinda like a, a keyway channel that's cut between the plates where they're bolted together. And they're, they're always moving a little bit when the freeze and the thaw and they heat up and that, and there's like a bead of sealer in there. And that's always moving and he said it's pretty common that it'll leak out there and you just find that groove and they actually use a grease gun. And they put their sealer in a grease gun with a, a grease needle and they just put it in there and just keep pumping, um, their sealer in there until it stopped and. And they, they said it's pretty common, especially on older tanks, that sealer kinda gets brittle, but that usually takes care of it. This was actually a rusted spot and, uh, if they're porcelain coated and they'll get a, like a chip in the porcelain and he said that. It's not like a car where rust will get under the paint and travel sideways, it'll typically go straight through, just like you drill the hole in it. It typically doesn't travel side to side, which is really good news, um, and that's what this one was, it was a hole right through, so. He was able to, to drill it out and he was either gonna tap it and thread a bolt in it. But with the cold temperatures, you need the sealer to seal that bolt, he thought that a plug would be a better option, so. It's basically like a bolt, uh, a boat plug, it was a bolt with a rubber sleeve on it that when you tighten it down, it, it just kinda expanded in the hole. And then he put some sealer over the top, it was like a wing nut on the outside and he gooped it all up with sealer, so. We left the tower level low overnight just to increase the chances of it working and it, it held. As that was going on, um, we ended up having a water leak, uh, kinda by Schwartz's reality, um. Uh, Main Street and West Third, kinda thirty feet off where the highway project ended, so. They, Ferguson Brothers came the next day and, uh, as they were starting to dig that one up, I got a call from a plumber that. Somebody's house was flooded and their yard was all wet up on Eighth Street, we had another water main break. So, when Ferguson's got done digging that one. So, when Ferguson's got done digging that one, I was on the phone with Rural Water, and they just happened to be coming through town. So, they came, and they've got listening devices that they can listen on valves and hydrants to kind of listen for the hiss of a leak, and we got it kind of narrowed down to the area we thought it was coming from, but it didn't make a lot of sense, because it was the, the backyard in the back of the house that the water was coming in, and the water main was in the front. So, he could hear it leaking on the curb stop, so we, we dug in the boulevard just to see if it was wet around the curb stop before we started tearing up the road. And we found that was dry, and we moved down the boulevard a little farther, and we ended up finding an abandoned concrete drain tile that the water had found its way into and traveled all the way across the yard to where there was a power pole that looked like it was bored through that drain tile. So, it had nowhere to go, and it just happened to be that that house's sewer service was feet away from there, and it followed the sewer and the sewer trench into the house, and was going into our sanitary also, so. We were able to put a pipe underground, so that it would take that water from underground in that tile, and we got it up to run down the road, so that we were able to relieve the pressure off the house. So, we left that go overnight, and we had a leak detection company come out of the cities, and they have, it's called a correlator, they put listening devices on the two fire hydrants on either side of the block, and it's kind of sends a signal between each of them, and it'll listen to where that leak is, and it'll say how many feet away the leak is from each hydrant. So, we opted to do that, just to get an idea where to start digging, and he gave us an area, and, um, he was probably, he was pretty close, probably twelve or fifteen feet away from where the actual leak was, but we got down and found it, it was a six-inch cast iron main that was sheared off like they usually do. It's the second leak we've had on that block in the last two years, but. It made for a long day, we had, the contractors pretty much were digging two days straight in town before we got both of them taken care of, but. So, glad to be done with that, hopefully for the rest of the year. Okay, also, I've got, uh, I got some quotes for the docks.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask Randy, uh, we were talking about whether the, we're looking into a water tower inspection?
Yeah, so, I'll go back to that, sorry, I kind of jumped past it. Um, I did get a, the, a price for the tank repair, although, um, usually he said, he told me they typically charge twenty-five hundred dollars if they can work it into another trip, otherwise they charge quite a bit more, but, um, he kind of gave us a break. He said he charges three thousand dollars, since it was a direct trip to and from the cities to get here and kind of take care of it. The, the leak just happened to be spraying right on top of our generator, so our generator was a big ice ball when I found it. We went and got two sheets of plywood and laid it across the top, so that it would hit the plywood and kind of run off, like a roof anyway, and not completely cover the generator, so I had to chip ice, so I could get the doors open and stop the generator, because the exhaust was completely froze up, and that generator starts on its own automatically a couple times a week, and I didn't want it to fire with the exhaust froze up and end up causing more damage to it, so, uh, so that's another reason why he came out the very next day, because he, he saw the generator was getting frozen, and he said we need to take care of that right away. So, they, they're gonna charge us three thousand dollars for that, but, um, he also looked at our tanks for the, the future inspection, he said they'll come out next spring and do it. Um, he recently bought, um, a robot diving, remote control, like, camera system that they can drop in there, and they can, um, dive the whole, or swim the whole tank with their remote control and televise the inside, and see what kind of condition everything is in, and the work that needs to be done without taking the water out, so it can stay in service. And he said he would do both tanks for, uh, five thousand dollars. I think he said he normally charges thirty-five hundred per tank, but he said since they were here, they'd give us a couple thousand dollar discount, so that sounds like a really good, good idea and a plan, um, that we should probably move forward on and kind of get an idea. Then he said he would, he'd put a report together with the video, and he'd kind of give us how many years we have until we absolutely need to have a major repair done. The tower is gonna have to come out of service when the final repair is done, and it sounds like it's kind of a substantial amount of time, like I thought he said close to a month, by the time they kind of set up everything and sand everything down, and there's like a two-part epoxy that they put on all the seams, all the bolts, everything, so it's gonna end up being a big process that's gonna need a lot of research on our side, on how we're gonna get water to the rest of the town, because right now all the water is pumped to that tower, and then that tower feeds the other tower, which feeds the other half of town also, so. We're gonna need to do some planning before we get into that. So.
Okay.
So, if I could get a motion to approve the, the tank inspection and, uh, get it scheduled for this spring.
I'll make the motion to approve the tank inspection.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to, uh, approve going ahead with the tank inspection in the spring, uh, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Any questions or discussion? I think it's necessary, very necessary. Um, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, now, I did get some prices for, uh, the docks. I talked to Lowery Manufacturing, they said they would build them for us again this year, they, um, they weren't exactly sure to begin with because of staffing issues and timing and that, but it sounds like they would do it. Um, I did mention that some of, I noticed that some of the, the bolts and the hardware that are in the green-treated lumber seemed like they were kind of corroded just from sitting over the summer. I mentioned it to him, and he did some calling around to some of their bolt and hardware experts, and they said stainless steel bolts was probably a better option, so this quote, this year, um, includes stainless steel hardware. We're gonna give that a try, and, um, hopefully it prolongs the life of the docks, or makes them easier to maintain in the future, to keep the corrosion down. Um, the, the total for the frames came to twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents, so that's about a hundred and eighty-four dollars per dock more than last year, but that also includes stainless hardware. I mentioned that to him today when I talked to him on the phone.
All, all the manufacturers use brass, if they're gonna go stainless.
Okay, I'll mention that to him and see if that's an option. So, can I get a motion to approve Lowery building the frames, or do we want to have some discussion?
Yeah, I think the councils discussed this before, that, uh, about proceeding with, uh, was it twenty-four more docks?
Yep, twenty-four, that's what we did last year, and I thought we'd do, that was a nice-sized batch to do, and stick with that.
I'll make that motion that we approve the Lowery manufacturing bid, um, for the dock framework.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to, uh, approve the, the proceeding with the, uh, the, uh, building of the frames by Lowery Manufacturing, uh, at the quoted price, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
And we did also get quotes on floats, we got a quote from Minnewaska Marine and Glacier Lakes Dock. I didn't get a copy of, I know we glanced, I glanced at Minnewaska Marines, but I didn't get a copy. They were very, very close, and, did you get it figured with the tax on?
Yeah, I took the tax off, I was, um, yeah, took the tax out.
Okay. Minnewaska Marine was cheaper by ninety-six dollars.
I, I should remind the council that we're not required to go out for bids on anything less than two hundred and fifty thousand, so. But we did go, get quotes from, from two sources, so.
With that being said, uh.
Doug's got a.
Well, that being said, the whole project is over two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
What's that?
As a whole, it's over that, as a project, not as a year, it's not, but as a whole, I mean, you look at how many sections of digs are placed, you know?
Well, you know, I don't know, do you, do you know anything about that, or?
Well, not a year, I, it depends how you look at it, if you look at it as twenty-four, your project is twenty-four a year, or if you look at it as a project over however long it takes us.
Wow. Because you, you could kind of look at the water towers in that respect too, you know? You could say, oh, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna repair this five times in the next ten years, or we're gonna replace it, and, and replacement is maybe a couple million or something, and repairing it's fifty thousand or something, so.
We're doing it a portion at a time, so, um, Randy. What's that?
Anyway, what's your, uh, recommendation, Randy?
Well, I guess like my recommendation would be get them from Minnewaska Marine, they were cheaper on the quotes, um. Also, we, the frames are built, I'm sure both floats are exactly the same, but, I mean, if they happen to be, one happened to be a quarter of an inch bigger, we have the potential that they won't fit in the frames too, but, um, they did check, and they were, they were the same, but.
They're just held a little, the two-by-bone screwed on, so it's not like they're bolted.
Yeah, it, it's where the, the tolerance is, is for the bolts that are in there, there is no clearance between where the bolts come in, and when we slide them on, they're, they touch hollow way, they have to be right on the money, so. But, I guess the, the fairest thing to, you know, we put them out for bids, and we take the cheapest one, I guess would be my recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Minnewaska Marine bid for seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, a- as it was the low bid.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to accept the Minnewaska Marine, uh, quote for, for floats, uh, seconded by Councilman Tafe, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. And I believe that concludes our agenda, um, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, uh, so we are adjourned. Thank you.